Good evening. Welcome to the Regular Planning Commission meeting, Grand Blank Township, June 6, 2019. Please rise and join us in pledging allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Planning Commission members present this evening. We have Mr. Van Suur, Ms. Colker, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Brown, Mr. Yellings, Mr. Banderski, Mr. Horscha.
Yeah, I'm sure he did call in and he's, he just recently had some surgery.
Yeah, I understand. Mr. Lloyd from our planning department is here, as well as our attorney, Mr. David Laddy. Been a request that maybe it might be appropriate for us, maybe just take a short moment of silence. Today is the 75th anniversary of D-Day, so you can do that. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the approval of this evening's agenda. Any changes?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the agenda as written.
Second. Motion by Mr. Banderski to approve the agenda as presented, support by Mr. Johnson. The other discussion? Not all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Next item is approval of the minutes from May 2, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed the final draft of the meeting minutes for May 2, 2019, found everything to be in order, and therefore make a motion that the minutes be approved as presented.
Motion by Mr. Banderski to approve the regular, the minutes for regular meeting of May 2. Is there support? Support by Mr. Horscha. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Next item is an opportunity for public comment. And this would be for anything that we are not having a public hearing on. We do have a couple of public hearings this evening. We have one in regard to planned unit development, the Hilton 2 Hotel. And that's PUD 19001. And then also a, there's going to be a hearing for rezoning case regarding Mr. Blessings' place. So if anyone in the audience would like to address the Planning Commission on anything other than those two items, now would be the time. There'll be an opportunity for public comment when we get to those two items.
Hi, I'm Joni Towernicky. We're here on behalf of the Friends of the Grand Blank Grid. Do we still give our address? Because even though we're here by with the group.
Both of you, please state your name and your individual addresses.
Okay. I'm Joni Towernicky at 5500 Woodfield Parkway in Grand Blank.
And I'm Monica Shapiro at 9413 Burning Tree Drive in Grand Blank.
Thank you.
Okay. So as I said, we're here on, representing a newly formed group called the Friends of the Grand Blank Grid. And our goal is to support your efforts and develop a partnership with you to develop a network of non-motorized paths in Grand Blank. As I said, we want to do this as a partnership. It's clear that you all believe in creating a dynamic community and doing things that not only serve our residents, but make this a community that people really want to come to. And so we share that belief and share the belief that non-motorized paths can play a big role in that. So what we've done, just kind of give you a background on where, what's happened with the Friends of the Grand Blank Grid. We are very newly formed. We had our first meeting on May 13. We had about 40 people there. Some of the members of the township board were there, and we appreciate that they were there. So as I said, we had about 40 people, and that really was a better turnout than we thought we were going to have. So we're really gaining a lot of momentum. Since then, we have registered with the state, so we are an official nonprofit. We have developed a website. We've launched a Facebook presence, which we've got over 200 followers on that. So it's something that people are interested in support. We are having our next meeting, next Wednesday, June 12, at 6:30, which you're very much invited to come to. I'll come back to that in just a second. And our intent there is to elect officers, which is a step we need to take to formally file for 501(c)(3). So the reason I'm giving you this is we are taking real steps to make this a real organization, and we're gaining a lot of momentum. So back on the meeting of next week on June 12, you are very much invited, and we would love to have you there. But again, that's just one more meeting on your agenda, and we want to come to be a partner with you and help you. So if you don't want to be there, I, if you give me a point person, or I can come back at your next public meeting and give you a report on what we're doing, or if you give me a point person, I will report back to them. We don't want this to be an extra burden on you. We know that you support this, you believe in it, you see the value in it, and we want to be a partner to help bring this to fruition.
The reason that we think that you assume that you support it is because the township signed a complete streets resolution in 2012, I think. And a complete streets resolution says that in any, any development going forward, we want to have an inclusive, context-sensitive design framework and infrastructure that enables safe and convenient access for transportation users of all ages and disabilities, including pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, and motor vehicle drivers. So we signed this resolution. Many townships in Michigan, in fact, Michigan has the most complete streets resolutions of any state in the country, but the resolution doesn't codify it into every business has to consider, is this a, does this follow, you know, do we have our sidewalk? Do we have our non-motorized trail in place? Some businesses in town have done it on their own, such as the Oaks, put a nice piece of non-motorized trail across theirs. There's a new development on Hill Road where they did it. But it goes, if our zoning laws incorporate complete streets principles, it would mean that it would be an additional hurdle that a proposal has to get over when they're making a new, if they want to put up a building, they have to do something about complete streets. And in addition, when the state comes, most of the roads that we have considered the Grand Blank Grid are public trunk line collectors and feeders. They're very, they're federally aided roads. So for instance, the big job on Hill, the big construction job on Hill was a, I think, a $3.5 million job, and it went in with no complete streets. Even though we have the resolution in place and the township supports it, there's no sidewalk completion, there's no, there was a chance there, they could have widened the road to make a lane for, for non-motorized traffic, but it didn't happen. And it's that kind of thing. We want to look into the, whenever the state comes to us and says, we're about to do this major reconstruction, we want it to be part of our township zoning laws, that it has to consider complete streets going forward. And it has to, other townships that have codified complete streets resolutions, such as the city of Novi, have had to hire engineering, an engineering firm to make sure that everything lines up. What, what are the standards? What, how do you add that to your zoning laws? So it's not a, it's not an easy thing to put it into all the zoning laws that you have, but we're asking that it be considered.
Mr. Lloyd, do you have any comment? I mean, I think they would probably, for more detail, would approach you.
Yeah, I'm expecting that we'll, we'll end up following up together. Good timing, we're working on our master plan, so happy to take over.
Right. So, Mr. Lloyd, would you be the, I see your title is Director of Planning, so would you be our point person?
Sure, happy to help you. If that's what the commission would like, I mean, I'd rather have a consensus, sure. Yeah, you bet.
Okay.
One other thing, you mentioned you have a meeting at 6:30. Location?
Oh, go ahead.
Police station.
At the police station, community room.
Mr. Lloyd, Mr. Chairman, normally we don't ask questions of folks out for public comment, but I'm just kind of curious, if you could start tomorrow, where would you start in the community?
That's a great question. One of our first tasks is to get an engineering, very high level overview, and then present that to our friends group to see what, what it is that people want. We'd like to pick a single project that will impact the most people. So that is an excellent question and one of the top priorities we have to determine what that first project is.
But I can say that one thing, since the idea of the grid is that these main roads crisscross our township and are actually kind of laid out nicely for non-motorized. We don't have a lot of parking, we don't have a lot of right-of-way. For instance, I'd like to see the trail that already exists near Walmart on Dort Highway extended to meet the non-motorized piece of the Dort Highway extension, so that we would have a backbone of our, of our system going from Hill to Baldwin straight on Dort. You could ride your bike or walk. And all those people that live off Hill, live off Dort, that might work at Genesis, would be able to get there. It would be, you know, that would be something that I'm thinking of, the Dort Highway extension, adding it that way. They have some plans to do it at the other end, but I'd like to see Dort itself be completely accessible from end to end. And then I wish that the new, the second half of the, of the Hill reconstruction's about to happen, but it's too, it's a year away, and you need two years' lead time to try to get a tap grant and blah, blah, blah. So I'd like to see the Dort, I'd like to see Hill, I'd love to see Saginaw, Cook. All those roads are roads that have a lot of residents, have a lot of schools, and, you know, lead into the township. So there's a, people love McCannlish, that's another one people would love to see.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Chairman, Chairman Laddie? Could I ask, we have access to future road projects, right? Early warnings of those?
Yeah, we get information from either the state or the county with regards to those future projects. They usually come through the DPW department or the superintendent's office, but, you know, we can still.
So maybe that might be an opportunity for us to share those projects early enough that we could get involved in the planning stage. And then, second, I think in the initial, the existing master plan, there's a page that kind of shows a non-motorized, I call it wishlist. But maybe that could be a source of information for this group as well to help prioritize the needs.
You bet. Good ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the planning commission?
Yes. I'm Jim Heinz, 2423 North Hill Drive in National Estates. And a couple of questions. I live on the north side of North Dale, I face Hill Road, and they're putting a complex in behind my house. And our water problem, now, I can't walk in my yard. I have one, one part of it only once all summer, because it's so wet. I got photographs, too. It's about that deep in some spots. And they're going to pave that, all that area and put a building up. It's just, I think, a half mile west of Dort, office complex going in.
South side of Dort.
Yes. It's right in my backyard. I've been there 30 years, and I've always had, my yard's pie-shaped, the back is real wide. It's always been this long wall of green. I liked being up north, and now it's all gone. I got a parking lot. So I'm curious about the, what they do about the water? Who do I, who do I go to talk about that?
Got some plans, I think, I'm convinced.
What I can say quickly is that the plans that are developed for any project in town do require drainage, so you're welcome to come and take a look at that.
Well, I'd like to.
What you'll see is that nothing about the way the property's been designed will create more water onto your property, and the design element requires it to not run off onto any adjacent properties. But you owe yourself the opportunity to come and take a look, so come on in.
Wherever you place, okay. And like property values, I've gone from seeing turkeys in my backyard to Ford's and Chevys. You know, all that stuff's gone. Took it all out. And it's, and ugly. Well, I'll get with you about the water, because.
Sure.
We can, we can river zone, we can flood it out. I took pictures, got my feet wet walking out there.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the Planning Commission? If not, we'll close the public comment portion, bring it back up to the Planning Commission. Next item on our agenda is just review of any correspondence that we received. We did receive two different planning and zoning news. One was here in our place, one was in our package. Anything else? We move on to old business. First item up is planned unit development, 19001.
It's new business.
I'm sorry. No old business. I moved too fast. No old business, moving into new business. Unless anyone else has any old business. Planned unit development, 19001, public hearing for the planned unit development Hilton Home 2 Hotel. Is there someone here that's going to make a presentation?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Michael Powell. I'm the owner of Powell Engineering in White Lake, Michigan, 4700 Cornerstone Drive in White Lake. I am the design engineer for the project. Mr. Sly Sandihaw is here as well to represent the owner. He's, this gentleman right here. We appreciate the ability to appear before you tonight, and last month, we also appeared before you to make a presentation. And the only items that have changed since last month is we took the advice from the Planning Commission and various members, and from staff, and have made the modifications to the plan to address those concerns, both traffic, landscaping, and a couple of other items. So with that being said, I'd be more than happy to give a very brief overview of the site, and then you could open it to the public hearing. It's up to you, Mr. Chairman.
That would be a good idea, because we've got some people here that probably weren't here last month.
All right. Very good. The first item that, and I see a large group here, last time I was able to put it in this area. If you'd like me to put the presentation drawing over this area, unless.
Do you have, one of these have that drawing on it?
I believe it might be, this is the existing site, so if you go up two spots there and click on it.
1283 Mason?
Let's see if it is.
Could be the right spot?
You are not in the right spot. So obviously, that's, that's from another project.
Well, I have a site plan, don't you worry. I got you covered.
I'm her buddy.
You just sit back and relax.
So while, while Mr. Lloyd's trying to find that, the existing site was proved as part of a PUD in 2017. What exists on the site right now is the Quality Inn Hotel, which is a, the building that's been there the longest and serving the local community and the, and the visitors to Grand Blank Township. The Planning Commission and Township Board approved the recently opened Fairfield Inn that lies to the west of the Quality Inn. And Mr. Lloyd has the proposed site plan up.
Keeping in mind, this is not a revised one.
Yeah, that's correct. This is one that was submitted at the, for your last presentation. That leaves an approximate one and a half acre parcel left undeveloped between the Quality Inn and the Taco Bell restaurant there to the north. The owners are operators of hotels all over the state. Therefore, they certainly could put a Quality Inn, another Quality Inn there, Motel 6, a smaller type hotel there on that leftover parcel. However, that just doesn't meet the needs, quite frankly, of the township and the visitors and the business district here in the township. As you probably are aware in your travels, people are very loyal to the, the hotels that they stay in. If you're just driving around and you need a place for the night, you get a Motel 6 or a Quality Inn. It's the lower-priced unit on the market. And so therefore, they're just spending the night, and they get up the next morning and continue their travel. The Fairfield Inn is a, is a Marriott, correct? Yeah, is a Marriott unit. And therefore, those people that are very, very tied to the Marriott, their Marriott Corporation card, they like to stay in the Marriott. They get points for doing that. The applicant, the Sandihaws Pinnacle Homes, Pinnacle Development Group, I mean, saw that the, the hotel, the Home 2 by Hilton, was being proposed up in the Flint area. They approached Home 2 by Hilton and convinced them that Grand Blank would be a much better place to put their Quality Hotel in Grand Blank instead of up in Flint. So they went through the process of getting an approval from Hilton to be able to place their Quality Hotel on this adjacent, on this additional piece. That completes the campus-type setting on this entire parcel and allows for three different types of uses on the site, or, or at least desired spots for the homeowner, I'm sorry, not homeowners, but the, the users of the site. Now that being said, the next concern is how do we incorporate this new brand on the entire site? And the hope is that we can develop a campus-type setting. And the campus-type setting then includes having all three facilities work off each other. They can utilize similar staffs back and forth, and the, the patronage will come to one area and be able to choose one of the three buildings, one of the three hotels that they like to frequent. As you can see by the, by the architectural sketch here, it is proposed as a campus setting. All the internal parking is cross-accessed. There is no assigned parking in any one location. The landscaping blends everything together. The architecture is being proposed to enhance the campus-type look. And as a matter of fact, the utilities have already been installed for the proposed new building. The detention basin, I understand the gentleman has a concern down the street regarding some stormwater. The stormwater system on this site is already developed and built for the proposed new Home 2 product. So we're looking for the Planning Commission to recommend approval to the Township Board so that this Home 2 product can be brought to Grand Blank Township. There are two items that I wanted to point out to the Planning Commission, however, and I'll do the same thing to the Township Board, that as part of this PUD application, it is the goal of the applicant to eliminate all property lines within this overall campus. So right now, the Quality Inn sits on its own site, the Fairfield Inn sits on its own site, and the third site where the Home 2 is being proposed is a separate parcel as well. As part of this approval, we are asking for an approval to eliminate all those property lines, and the owners will create a site condominium to where all of this entire site, the entire 11-plus acres, will be one owner and controlled by the association. So all maintenance, all snow plowing, all road paving, all, all landscape maintenance will be done by one entity, and one entity will be responsible. So that's a requirement of the PUD, and this is the desire of the, of the property owner as well. So as part of this, we're looking to combine all this, all these parcels into one, and the units themselves will exist of the buildings alone. So unit number one will be the Home 2. Unit number two will be the Quality Inn, building alone, building alone, and unit number three will be the Fairfield unit. So all the properties will be co-owned by everyone, and the one owner will be responsible. The only other thing I wanted to point out to the Planning Commission is that by eliminating the property line, there are no variances being requested. Everything meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, except for one area that the owner wanted me to represent to the Planning Commission, and that's to the south side of the Quality Inn. When, when there are people that come in with a little larger vehicle that can't fit in a parking stall, they currently are pulling in along the south property line of the property just south of the Quality Inn, and they parallel park along that south property line there. The owners would very much like the Planning Commission and Township Board to allow that process to continue, and so we're looking for a variance request for parallel parking to exist closer than the 10-foot setback requirement along that south property line. There are no residents to the south, it's another parking lot, the Dort Federal Credit Union sits just to the south, and so we don't believe it will impact anyone, and it will greatly enhance the usability of that site for vehicles larger than a car. So that being said, I'd be more than willing to answer any questions. The owner's here to answer any questions, and we can certainly address any concerns the public might have.
Any specific questions from Planning Commission members?
Yeah, I've got one, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Let's talk a little bit more about the parking that you were alluding to.
Yes.
Typically, on a weekday, what would, what would the Quality Inn expect from a standpoint of vehicles being parked over there?
All right.
I don't know if you have any data.
I'm going to turn to the owner and let him describe that condition.
Good evening. Sly Sandihaw with Pinnacle Hospitality and the Home 2 Suites Development. Address is 9044 Holly Road, Grand Blank, Michigan. We have 58 rooms at the Quality Inn, it's just a two-story building, and typically maybe 40 vehicles on a sellout night, when all 58 rooms are occupied.
And those, those 40 will be vehicles that are either parked right next to the entrance into the rooms and all of that? Maybe I misunderstood. I, I wanted to really understand, the overflow parking, or whatever you want to call it, I envision that along the Dort Federal Property Line. Am I confused?
Larger vehicles.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yep, you're correct.
So that's, so that, would we expect to see 18-wheelers there?
No. No, I would expect an RV or a contractor van, vehicles of that nature. Do we get trucks from time to time? Sure, but it's not convenient for them. So typically, we do not get them because they can't go around the building. So those, those guests don't typically stay with us.
Oh, then if we were to consider approving your request there, basically, nothing would change.
Correct.
In other words, you don't envision more parking there?
No. No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Planning Commission members at this time?
Just restate, because I asked this question before, these individual units are not sellable.
So we, our plan is to work with the township attorney to approve a site condominium with three units, and the units are referring to the three hotels.
Hotels.
The hotels, I think the last time we discussed this, you were referring to the individual rooms within the hotels.
Right.
No, they, those are not sellable and would not be in anybody's interest to sell them, so we, that would never happen.
Laddy, have you had the opportunity to review any preliminary documents at this point?
I personally have not done that yet. Now, I don't know what stage of preparation they are or dispersment, but I have, I'm vaguely aware of the concept, and I don't think, conceptually, I don't think it's going to be necessarily a problem, assuming we can sort out the details.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think what we'll do is we'll go to the public. We will open the public hearing for PUD number 19001. If there's anyone that would like to address the Planning Commission. I need your name and address again.
Okay, it's Monica Shapiro, 9413 Burning Tree Drive, Grand Blanc. I would just like to say that this proposed hotel is a perfect example of something where zoning requirements in our township might require that they put a stretch of non-motorized according to all the statewide standards for safety for bicycles and pedestrians along that piece of Holly, because Holly is one of the ones we want to complete. So Complete Streets would ask that a hotel like this going in, especially with the three different hotels, that whole stretch in front of it should have a non-motorized component according to whatever engineering standards the township came up with for that type of thing. So that's an example of how it would operate if it were to be incorporated into our zoning requirements.
Anyone else on my left that would like to address? Anyone in the back? Anyone else? Setting this off easy here. We will close the public hearing, bring it back up to the Planning Commission for any further discussion. So, I'm answering.
So I have a question. Have, has the, this proposal for especially the parking along the south border, has there been any conversation with the Dort Federal Credit Union people about this to kind of let them know it's being requested or planned?
We have not touched base with Dort Credit Union. However, it has been being used this way for many, many years, and there aren't proposed to be any changes, and they haven't approached us with any concerns whatsoever with the existing condition nor with the proposed condition.
It'd be worth just bringing up with them before you go to Township Board?
Yes.
Chairman, I have a procedural question. You mentioned that you may need a variance in order to deal with the parking issue that we've been talking about, and I just wanted to clarify that because I thought with PUD sometimes we have some discretion now to kind of vary some of the strict requirements for setbacks and things like that.
I think a better way to maybe have phrased that would have simply been a deviation from the current standard. The PUD does in fact allow you to deviate from the current standard, but it doesn't allow you to deviate from the standard if the sole reason for doing that is to allow the project. So in other words, you can't get a variance through a PUD simply to avoid having to go get a variance from the zoning board of appeals. It has to be in appropriate circumstance. And in this case, as was mentioned, it's been there, it's functioning very well, and it is a place for those larger vehicles towing, you know, let's say a car and a trailer to park, because otherwise, it's quite a challenge out there. But it's not a variance, and there's no need to go beyond the Planning Commission and/or the Board. It's not a ZBA item.
Okay. Because I was wondering if it was, we might have to put a condition on the acceptance or something like that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lloyd, did you have any thing in your report?
No, I would just point out that the item has been vetted pretty well, went to the Site Plan Review Committee a couple of different times. The applicant kind of was taking their time, I think, at the beginning, and then got their legs underneath them and moved the project along pretty good. They've been responsive to the issues that we've identified. And keep in mind, it is the Board's responsibility, but the, there is a provision in the PUD, there needs to be a public benefit associated with that, and I think it probably behooves the applicant to maybe help us learn that and understand that just a little bit better. Mr. Chairman, that's just a suggestion. Please.
Chris?
Absolutely. As part of the campus-type setting, we have pathways, non-motorized pathways, sidewalks throughout this entire campus setting to allow for the patrons to walk back and forth between the three of them, to participate in something that might be happening in Unit Three from Unit One. We have also proposed a pathway system, since there isn't a pathway system paralleling Holly Road, we have linked all the pathways, all the sidewalks within this site to the south and to the north, and we're linking up to the Taco Bell to the north, and then putting a crosswalk out to the pathway that leads up to Cook Street, in which the pathway heads up north to Cook Street and then will eventually cross Cook Street. We have also proposed, as part of the public benefit, there is a beautiful wetland area and natural area lying to the west that is going to be preserved in perpetuity. And as part of that, we are proposing to develop a people area, kind of a picnic area with picnic table, chairs, and a few parking spaces dedicated to that, so the public can not only drive if they want to and eat their lunch there, but people can also walk there. And we're looking to have a, not a gazebo, but, Mark, what's that called with the overhead beams?
Pergola?
Pergola, thank you. To protect the people from the sun in that area underneath the picnic table. And then also, we're looking to have the spy binoculars mounted there so that people can look at the wildlife down in the, down in the wetland area. And we fully expect, as they do now, that the family members that are visiting people in the, in the health complexes, they'll be able to stay here and actually visualize and see the campus settings or see the hotel, I apologize, the healthcare facilities there to the west and southwest, and can kind of feel that they're still, they're still with them a little bit. But it's mostly for the people to eat lunch and actually identify the wildlife while they're eating lunch out there as well.
You mentioned some changes that have been made since the last time. Can you highlight what those are?
Yes, sir. We have eliminated the Colorado spruce is what was suggested by Mr. Yancho. We certainly recognized on our landscape architect that it did as well that there's a disease going around for those. We pulled those off the plan and put one of the recommended species in their place. There were, I think, five of those trees proposed, and we've removed those. We have, I apologize, my mind has just gone blank.
I may.
Yes, please.
With the removal of those Colorado spruce that Mr. Yancho had recommended, I don't recall, what did Mr. Yancho recommend as replacements for those trees?
Different varieties.
I don't remember.
Yeah, that's correct. One was, I think, an Australian pine, and, because he understood that we wanted more of a columnar-type tree, so he had two types that he recommended, and our landscape architect totally agreed with him, and we replaced him with those.
He knows his business.
He appears to know his business. Exactly correct. Sly, did you remember the other changes? I draw a blank.
What, it wasn't another change, but we addressed the traffic situation with the county.
Right.
Yep. I know you worked with the county.
That's correct. And we met with them, and they certainly agreed with the traffic consultant that we have onboard. They're going to change some timing of lights in order to assist in the traffic congestion at peak hours during the day. But there was, there was nothing on our site that needed to be modified. Just to remind the Planning Commission, we have the access out to the marginal access lane that runs to the west side of Holly Road, and we also have an easement through the Taco Bell site, so our patrons can go up an outlet to Cook Street, take a right, and be able to make a left on Holly Road or go left on Cooks, Cook Road as well.
Providing they go speeding out of there by 55 miles an hour.
Hopefully, they don't do that.
Because the signal only lasts about 20 seconds.
Yes, but that's what, that's why they're going to modify. Yeah, that's right. Appreciate that.
The drawings that I'm looking at have an area that's shaded in red and said area to be modified. Can you explain what that is?
Yes, and quite frankly, that's a little confusing, and I'm sorry that it was brought to you. As, as part of the original approval for the PUD for the Fairfield, the original plan had the parking spaces aiming in towards the building, and it just did not flow very well, especially as people are coming into this site, past unit number one. So we made a modification and turned the parking aimed to the north instead of to the south. It provided, did two things. Number one, it provided for no disturbing of the residents on that, or the patrons on that end of the building, but it also gave us the ability to add some parking spaces. Everything still meets zoning ordinance, but it did greatly improve the circulation around the site.
Essentially, the, what was the drive aisles where the parking spaces are now?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
If this was an individual site plan, would have probably been a variance as well because it put parking out. Then it's back.
No, no, the parking itself is still 10 feet off the property line. Instead of the drive being 10 feet off the property line, we jogged the drive down next to the building, and the parking now is 10 feet off. So it meets all the ordinance requirements.
On the north then?
On the north side, that is correct. That is correct.
Anyone else have any questions, members? Make a motion? This would be a motion for a recommendation to the Township Board for approval of the PUD.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion regarding PUD 19-001 for the planned unit development for Pinnacle Hospitality at 9044 Holly Road, that we make a recommendation to forward this with our recommended approval to the Board of Trustees.
Work for that motion. Support, Mr. Johnson. Any further discussion? I guess I've got a question from Mr. Laddie. Should we have your review of the documents, the PUD documents as part of that?
Could I answer that?
Yeah.
Thank you. What I would recommend you do, and David, just correct me if I'm wrong, is add a condition that the item not be forwarded to the Board until such time as adequate review and approval of the documents occurred by the Director and the Attorney.
Would you like this as part of my motion?
It would help if you would add that.
Rather than repeat it, I want to add what.
Modify your motion.
Yes, exactly. Mr. Lloyd's recommendation.
I have a comment.
Mr. Johnson, do you accept that as part of your support?
Yes.
Yeah, I would just make a comment, and out of, as a courtesy, I would suggest you talk to the owner of the property there where you're going to put these additional parking, even though it's been that way for some time. It would just be a courtesy to let them know that you want, you want that to continue.
Yes, sir, we plan on doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? We have a motion by Mr. Brown, support by Mr. Johnson, to forward this on to the Township Board with a positive recommendation. Any other discussion? If not, a vote is in order. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, under new business, thank you, is zoning case 658, a hearing for rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dan Park, Park Club's associates architects, representing Lou Blessing, Blessing Plumbing Company locally here in Grand Blanc, and Rudy Quaterer, Griggs Quaterer Engineering here in Grand Blanc.
Excuse me, would you please state your address?
2314 Cook Road, Grand Blanc.
Thank you.
If I could refer to a drawing here, basically, we're here to request rezoning, a small three-tenths of an acre parcel located here on Baldwin Road just east of Saginaw Street. This is a three-tenths acre piece. Mr. Blessing owns this entire corner except for the smaller corner where there's an existing building right on Saginaw and Baldwin. This is, of course, on the east side. The Oaks Complex is down here toward east, so that's zone MDM. We have all neighborhood commercial zoning that way to the south. We have neighborhood commercial zoning here on the north side of Baldwin, adjacent to Saginaw, single family right here. And this is, this piece here is all zoned, neighborhood commercial. For whatever reason, this little parcel was left MDM as, maybe at one time, I don't know, might have been a part of that larger piece, I don't know. Mr. Blessing bought this with the intent of developing a new facility for his business. We've done some preliminary design work on that, and we're simply requesting rezoning to make it compatible with the balance of his site that he owns so that we can develop this facility. Part of the reason we're requesting it is that being three-tenths of an acre, virtually none of the requirements for the property to be zoned MDM and develop it as an MDM piece, you couldn't put a unit on it. So it's consistent with what we're trying to do, it's consistent with all the zoning in the surrounding area, and we think more of a cleanup issue than anything. And it is consistent with the master plan zoning that way. And our really intent is not to make the building any larger or build there, it just becomes our access point into our future development point when he develops his parcel. So I could kind of go through a checklist of the conformity of the, of all the zoning requirements that we need to address, but I guess the one thing I would point out is the lack of a reasonable rate of return when you can't develop a piece based on its zoning, which we have here.
Excuse me, while you go through that, may I suggest you take that map and put it over here on the side so the audience can see it?
Certainly, thank you.
And then just point out that the shaded area is the small piece that we're, we're talking about.
So again, maybe just to quickly summarize some of the important points regarding the rezoning request, is it is consistent with the master plan, shows that it's neighborhood commercial. It is compatible with the natural features and configuration of the site. It is developable for what we're trying to do with it. It's virtually too small to be developed as MDM, so that precludes the owner from really utilizing it to receive any kind of return on it. It's adjacent to neighborhood commercial, to other neighborhood commercial zoning, so it's consistent with, with the flow. It's not a spot zone or anything of that nature. There are adequate services and utilities that service what we're trying to do here, both sewer and water. The traffic, we had a traffic, whatever, low-level traffic engineering study done, and being a neighborhood commercial will actually generate less trips than what MDM would generate. We're only talking two or three trips because it's such a small parcel, so it's really insignificant no matter what. As far as demand for neighborhood commercial, I know Mr. Blessing looked all over before he bought this piece in Grand Blanc Township. He wanted to remain in Grand Blanc Township. And this is the, probably one of the very few sites neighborhood commercial you found. And it's, it's really necessary. There is a large part of the parcel that has some blow depressions that have drainage issues, so we're developing the part that's left. And so he really needs this corner to make the facility viable. It does meet all dimensional requirements as, when combined with the larger neighborhood commercial, so it can be developed per the neighborhood commercial. And again, like I said, it's not a spot zone. Rudy, did you have any other issues you'd like to, or?
I think you mentioned both of them. I just want to point out again in regards to the development standards. I just want to point out again in regards to the development standards, you look at the zoning ordinance, minimum size for an MDM parcel has to be five acres, which is only .2 acres, .25 acres. The setback requirements are fixed feet to rear and front, so when you combine those two, you're actually overlapping them. So really, this lot would not work for MDM right now. And just to point out too, we are extending if this happens.
Right, right.
We are extending that flight path to here.
Does it extend?
Yep. Can I ask you that?
That's on the master plan.
And that's all. Would you have any questions?
Anybody in the planning commission have any questions, comments for the application? Mr. Lloyd?
Yeah, I will. Thank you. We have spent some time with Mr. Blessing on this property, and as time went on, you know, he did his due diligence early. As time went on, it was recognized this would need to happen. And one of the things we did discover was there's, you know, the master plan is inconsistent right now. So changing this, if you will, would would eliminate the inconsistency with our master plan because the map that I have up here, if you look to the area, I'll move the cursor around, this is where the little bulb out is, if you will, little bump out. It's not on the master plan. So I think what happened is when we rezoned that area is they more than likely had that remnant piece of that remnant development there, multiple family development, and so it just got zoned accordingly. And now that there's an interest in a new use and looking at the zoning, modifying that zoning to be all NC would make that whole area consistent, eliminate that very small inconsistency with our master plan. The idea that the applicant has in regards to his development is very reasonable. That's not a consideration for tonight, but you know, the applicant is is well on his way to having, you know, done a very comprehensive job.
This is rezoning. We will have a public hearing if there's, I think we'd like to go to the public now if there's anyone that would like to address the planning commission in guarding this project. Now would be the time.
My name is Deborah Bland. I live at 5365 East Baldwin Road, which is directly across the street from the old piece of property. I've lived there all my life. I can tell you anything you want to know about all that section of town, how the drains come down the hill from where they put up the new apartment buildings going west on Baldwin Road. And I also, there's drains that come down there. That's why there's a lake on that property that you bought. Hmm? It's a it's a lake. It looks like a little lake. It's never gone away for at least 15 years. It was a low place. It drained down. The people that live there, the Johnston's, down here on the on this part of it was where they had their garden. When they built those apartments up there, that's when it started filling up. There's another drain that comes down on the other side going north. So anyway, I'm concerned about my mail. I have to cross that road, and I got a letter saying that there's going to be at least five lanes in front of my house before too long. And I'm getting older. I can't cross that road like I used to. And when they come around the corner, they're going 60 miles an hour before they even get to my house. I almost got hit today turning into my driveway, making a left-hand turn from behind because they follow me so close through that intersection. They don't pay any attention to my brakes, my hand, you know, my lights, my blinker, nothing. They pay no attention to it. So there's only three houses on that side, my side of the street. Our mailboxes are across the street. Now, if you go west on Baldwin Road, everybody's mailbox is in front of their house. So if you go, all these houses going up and down there, and even on the other side, you know, down there where stoles live before you get to the railroad tracks, they have theirs on their side. Oh, I'm sorry. They have theirs on their side. So I've been to the post office a couple of different times. I spoke to Kathy Lane, and I got this letter or the postcard in the mail talking about this, and I thought, well, I need to do something about this.
A reaction did you get out of the post office? I guess I'm curious.
Too bad. Yeah. So, you know, this is not something I just started doing. You know, I've tried it before and before. And then a lot of people turning into the Oaks, they've almost been clipped too. That's how fast these cars are coming. It's a blind intersection. If you come from Baldwin Road from Holly Road, you can't see what's coming from the south. So, you know, and then they and they go like this through the intersection. So I think that there, something needs to be adjusted for this because otherwise I'm going to get run over.
Mr. Lloyd, I would think that the post office is the one you would address this with, but I don't.
Oh, yeah.
I feel satisfaction from that.
We can, we can, we can try to help communicate with the post office, but that is where that issue is. We don't have any regulation over that. David, I don't know if you want to weigh in on that, but I don't know what we could possibly do. I do want to be clear about what's happening tonight and just, it might sound a little rude or abrupt, but what I want to do is just reiterate the fact that this isn't about a development, this is a rezoning request. It's good to know that that you've had that problem.
It's part of my concern with the rezon.
That's, I understand.
You know, and I feel that something should be done about this intersection. I mean, they put the light up finally, you know, that was a good help. At least people stopped getting killed. There was a girl beheaded one time at one accident. So these cars are going too fast. I think, I don't know.
Well, all I can say, folks, is the rezoning won't change that. And if there's, if there's an interest in pursuing this with the post office or whomever with regards to the street speed, that that is a separate issue. But the issue was raised tonight. We can help carry that issue forward.
Eventually, a five-lane road. I'm sure your mailboxes were on that side when it was a two-lane road, right?
Yeah, when it was a dirt road. Yeah, it was a cow path, actually. It really was. And also, I'd like to know what's going to happen with that little lake over there across the street? If they drain that or fill it in, is all that water going to come to me?
Go ahead, Mr. Lloyd. The if the project is developed in the future, and it's planned on being developed, they will have to address all the water that is created or produced from that site and all the water that goes to that site. We do know that there's water that comes to that site from across Saginaw, I believe it is.
Right, from down the drain.
Creating an awful lot of extra water. They're going to have to deal with that. They're going to have to capture that water, prevent that problem from happening ever again in the future, put it in a system, they've already designed it, and put it in in the in the drain system. So it will be put underground immediately, put out to Baldwin, I believe, and going south on Baldwin to the to the drain facility. Now, you know, if they move forward with their project.
Well, I know that the Oaks had a lot of problems with it. You know, there's a reason why the farmers didn't farm a lot of this land because it was swamp. And then they sold it and they put houses on it, Lake Bella Vista. That was a swamp, I remember, when I was a kid. And now people are living on it. All right, well, that was my concern, so.
Keep your comments. I'm glad you brought them up. For tonight's meeting, I think it's more of a rezoning issue, but it might be a good idea for you to stay in touch as this project goes forward. You can see what they're planning to do. You have the opportunity.
Mr. Chairman, could I just maybe make one suggestion or ask you? Have you tried contacting your congressman about the mailbox issue? Sometimes, you know, inquiries from their office can...
Yeah, the mailbox, you know, well, they did it going west on Baldwin Road. When they put those apartment buildings in, all those mailboxes went to the houses on, you know.
But sometimes, I mean, I know some people contact their representative, U.S. representative, and they contact the post office, and sometimes you get some action that you wouldn't otherwise get from a big government agency.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else from the public who'd like to address the planning committee?
My name is David Hosner. I live at 5377 East Baldwin, directly next door to Debbie. I understand that this is the discussion about the rezoning, but the point is rezoning it will create these problems for us. I understand the landowner wants to make a profit. That's the whole point, but our profit goes down. This, if this is allowed to go through, it will create more traffic through that intersection, which is already used as a drag strip. If you don't blame me, come sit for an hour, you'll hear it. I have a small child. I will not let him play in the front yard due to the traffic. I understand this has nothing to do with this meeting, but these issues are a direct result of the rezoning. It will cause these problems for us.
Your comments? I think what the the other alternative to this was developed as MDM, you'd actually have a little slightly higher potential.
Higher traffic volumes.
Potentially, yeah.
We already have the additional traffic from the Oaks. Putting another business directly next to it, it's just going to increase that traffic. Then the discussion of widening Baldwin to five lanes is going to be a nightmare. I can kiss half my front yard goodbye.
That was...
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to address the planning commission? Not bringing back up to the planning commission discussion? I apologize, I got to step on, I got a call I'm going to take. I guess to my colleagues, any comments, questions?
I guess I would just ask Mark again to explain how the rezoning, it changes something other than the zoning to be compatible with the surroundings.
Sure. Well, I think the map that's up right now is probably as good an example as we'll get. You can see the large MDM brown area on the right side, the NC orange in the middle. The applicant owns the property, you know, essentially, he owns this area here, is looking to develop that. The area that is extension of the MDM does not have the underlying master plan designation that's consistent with the MDM. The underlying master plan designation for that small parcel there is actually NC, which is what the applicant is looking to move it towards. So we do accomplish a couple of things. Well, the applicant accomplishes his goal of rezoning his property, but the township eliminates the inconsistency existing between our master plan and our and our zoning districts. It's not a major issue, but it's an issue. We like to keep those things cleaned up. This just happens to be to be able to do that. I should point out, and I don't want to elaborate much on this, but a lot of the time that we've spent on this property has even looking at and thinking about it has been working in conjunction with the folks at the Oaks to resolve the issue associated with drainage. Now, they just recently went out and put together an entire plan to redo their drainage on the site that will address the issues that they have and actually address some of the issues that are existing on this property. But in addition to that, the property owner, Mr. Blessing, is also going to have to address his site drainage issues. He's got to develop that site, and he's got to develop the site in a manner that it takes care of all of the water that comes onto his property. And he cannot let the water that comes onto his property go off his property unchecked, unmanaged. So in other words, it has to be put underground and put into the storm sewer system. That will eliminate any overflow drainage that's happening today from property to property. That will go away because soon as that water hits the surface and there'll be, you know, paved surfaces, it'll be collected into a catch basin and taken off the site. That's a huge difference than what you have today. That lake will essentially go away and it'll be moved downstreams. And I think those are the primary issues that we contended with as we looked at this, that the rezoning was almost a no-brainer from a, you know, the master plan is a little bit geeked, it needs to be corrected. We could take that on ourselves. We could eliminate the, we could add that little bit to the master plan if we chose to. We could add that little piece coming out, make it consistent, but you'd never be able to develop the property as the applicant has indicated. So from a zoning and a rezoning standpoint, one of the provisions in our ordinance does in fact state that if there's no reasonable return on on the investment of the existing property and that property is too small to be developed for multiple-family residential.
Okay, but if the property is not rezoned, Mr. Blessing can still proceed with his development?
He may be able to. He'd need to modify it and not develop on that little piece there. He wouldn't be able to, because that's his property too. He would not be able to use that piece of his property.
But he could still put the rest of it, put his development on the rest of the property.
I'm not sure. I couldn't say that for sure. It would have to be modified. I can't say if that's going to take up too much space, but what I can say, and I want to repeat it.
Well, I guess my point that I was trying to get at, and I just got a nod from the architects here, that whether it's changed or not, the development will probably still proceed. So arguments about what the development's going to bring that if, you know, has no effect on the rezoning.
Right.
And so I just, to me, that's the simple answer to what happens if it's not rezoned. It'll stay...
He can develop it anyway and still have the same project.
He can still proceed with his development.
Will the planning commission approve?
Right.
Yes. So if Mr. Blessing wanted to begin developing a project, he could come right to you, from you to us, to go ahead and and develop that property even though you'll have a small little ESF.
No, he could. He could. He'd do, he'd go through the site plan review committee probably. There would be no need to go to the planning commission. That item would probably just go to the, it'd be no, no public hearing, and it would go to the site plan review committee. Because it's a, it's a, it would be a use that would be consistent with all the provisions of the ordinance, and there's no way to say no to that. You can't deny that.
I think that's important for...
That's why I raised the point.
Understand that, as my colleague was as well. So I don't know if that helps, hurts, or...
I could just maybe chime in a little bit. Yeah, the client has, our client has a right to develop his property. He owns two pieces, one's zone MDM. We don't have a building on it, we just have a drive on it. So it can be developed pretty much identical to that with a shifting of the drive. Do we want to do that? No, it's better to have that drive moved further west from the Saginaw Street intersection. But we can't be precluded from developing the parcel according to its current zoning, which is neighborhood commercial. We're just trying to make it all consistent. So it wouldn't be, we wouldn't be generating more traffic with that piece getting rezoned. We wouldn't be making a larger building with that piece rezoned. We're just kind of making the whole parcel, which is about two and a half acres. This is about two tenths of an acre of the two and a half that is inconsistent with zoning. So it just makes more sense. It's the practical thing to do to clean it up.
Can I, can if I can, the visitors in the back, did that make any sense? Do you understand what we're discussing?
Well, in a way, it does. It does in a way.
Excuse me, would you please come up to the podium?
There's a family that's living in that house right now. It's rented out. But I figured that there was a driveway closer to Saginaw Street where Johnston's lived that he bought, and then there's that driveway directly in front of my house, and I figured that he would want to use both those driveways.
I don't know, we don't know what that would be. Right. My concern was that you understand, you visitors, because we're glad you're here, understand that he can begin developing that property.
Oh, yeah, we we knew that there wasn't anything we could do about this when it started. Because when they put the Oaks in, there wasn't anything I could do about that either. And they came and they parked on my lower drive and messed up my driveway, all the workers did. One of them was even asleep there. So they weren't good new neighbors. No, they they are not good new neighbors. And but my concern is trying to get my mail, the the amount of traffic that's already that comes down there. If you sat in my driveway, you would understand what we're talking about. And I take my life in my hands every time I go across the street. So if, I don't know, maybe children at play signs or miles per hour signs, you know, speed limit signs, or or something is going to need to be done with that corner. Because it's, you know, that's my concern.
Because it's, you know, that's my concern. Yeah, I knew that there wasn't anything we could do to stop this.
Okay, thank you.
But, yeah.
Those would all be addressed during the development plan. Anything else from planning commission? Did we close a public hearing?
No, we did not.
Close a public hearing, bring it back up to planning commission. Any other discussion? Mr. Lloyd, just to be clear from a process standpoint, the planning commission takes action on this.
And makes a recommendation to the board to do the resume.
As a recommendation to them as well?
Yes.
Mr. Bandersky, do you have something else?
Do I make a motion?
It's up to you.
I'll be happy to make a motion that we recommend to the township board approval of the zoning request, ZC 658, for the vacant land 12-35-200-007 from MDM to NC.
I'll support the motion by Mr. Bandersky, support by Mr. Brown. Any other discussion?
I have a question. How is it called vacant land when there's a house on it? Just out of curiosity.
Is it a non-conforming use or is it no?
No, there's a house on the, on the piece to be rezoned. It is, there is a unit on that, the other property is vacant.
Yeah, it really shouldn't say vacant land in the description.
No, just a mistake.
Okay. Can we strike that from the motion then? Just to recognize that it does have a non-conforming use on it?
The fact that the, you want me to restate it?
Well, no, just, well, just a minute to delete the vacant land reference.
Friendly amendment?
Right, because I mean, when you read it, you're reading it, I think, off the agenda.
Your motion included the vacant land such and such, so you're removing the vacant land wording from your...
You don't have to read it again.
I make a motion that we approve, recommend to the township board approval of the zoning request for the vacant land.
No?
Nope. It's not vacant.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. For the land.
12-35-200-07.
And it is the, the 12-35-200-07 from MDM to NC.
Mr. Bandersky's modified his motion. Do you accept that?
I do.
Any other discussion, question? Not to vote is in order. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Well, opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Item C on the agenda mentions joint meeting township board as a, just a reminder for us?
Actually, it's just to invite you. It hasn't been, we're trying to set it up. We're hoping that the planning commissioners can all attend. It's going to be a discussion primarily about the new DDA plan and the relationship between the DDA and the planning commission as well as the township board and how that relationship ought to look and how it ought to function, the kinds of things that that DDA is looking at and thinking about. I prefer that you guys get a heads up on this stuff instead of something coming before you one day and having some kind of conflict. I'd much rather that we all work as a team and work collectively. And that's the idea, is coming together with this meeting and forming that relationship and letting folks know what's going on. I know the planning commission hasn't been too involved in the DDA plan and you should be. You know, there's, there's good reason for that consistency with our zoning, consistency with our master planning. All those things are functions of the planning commission and your relationship to the DDA plan and it's kind of moving on and we haven't really had that opportunity and so that's what's happening.
What's a week from today at 5:30?
5:30, week from today. Yes. Everybody generally good with that? Is there any conflict? Anybody that you know? Okay, great. Thank you.
Doesn't matter what time traffic allows me to get here, that's it.
All right.
All right, next item, master plan, any updates on that?
I would just like to say we did our, we had our steering committee meeting earlier and went through and pretty much buttoned down our survey work, the primary survey work. We've got some other things that we're working on as well, some of the, you know, meeting in a box and other more face-to-face kind of survey work. But it went very well. I think Leah's doing a good job. The committee's working really well together. The discussion tonight, I thought, went exceptionally well. And it was, it was a good meeting. I don't know if Mr. Laddie or Mr. Mansour or Mr. Johnson have anything they want to add, but I think it's going well.
I thought it was a very productive meeting.
Meeting again, I'll be meeting with Leah next week early to, we're going to a couple of the side issues, but things are moving.
Question. The survey that, results that we're distributing, is that the only one that's been done to date?
Yes, it's with the school. That was the extent of it.
So the next, the next group is what?
Is much larger, community-wide.
When do you expect that will go out?
I think we were talking about that going out maybe near, nearing the end of June. Double check the timing because I know that...
July, I think it was.
Well, I think we're hoping we're going to get the comments back in the next couple of weeks and hopefully we've got a ready-to-go document. I'd say, you know, by, by the middle of July, these should be on their way. I'll put it that way.
Want to make one more comment? We didn't, the steering committee, the people involved, didn't see the version of the survey that was distributed to the 11th graders at the school. We'll have better control of that for the next survey that goes out to the public.
We saw samples, but not a final. Is that what you said?
We, actually, there is, the sample hasn't been developed yet.
Of this survey?
Of this.
No, that's coming.
That's the next thing. We're talking about the one that was used at the schools. We saw some kinds of questions, didn't we, that they were talking about previously?
Yeah. We saw the ones that were kind of more generated toward what did you expect or why would you stay? Some of the earlier questions were not a part of our initial review.
Since you've got the floors or anything you'd like to bring up regarding township board?
No, I think we're good. Looking forward to the meeting on 13th. It's been a long time since the planning commission and the boards met, so we have a lot of things to go over and I think part of that meeting's going to be talking a little bit about how we can be ambassadors on the master plan and how we can work together on that. Thank you.
Mr. Lloyd, do you have anything else on planning and zoning?
I don't. I don't have anything to add tonight.
Brown, zoning board of appeals?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Zoning board of appeals met about 10 days ago. Cases on the agenda, one was for a gentleman in Kings Point subdivision and wanting to build, I guess I want to try to make sure I characterize this correctly. I'll call it an outbuilding to begin with, but just a big garage where he wants to put vehicles in. He wanted to be able to do some woodworking there and all different kinds of things. When I visited the site that day before the meeting and it was a vehicle, a truck of some sort, looked like a tow truck to me, a small version, plus two other cars in the driveway. And I went around and tried to meet some of the neighbors and finally I did reach one. And they were aware that this was going on and they came in here and there were, weren't any hard feelings, but they were adamant that they were against this proposed building. And the area that he would drive this truck through was you could shake hands with somebody sleeping in the bed in the house next to him. It was that narrow. And he wanted a blacktop then drive it through there. Anyway, so they didn't like anything like that and ultimately the zoning board of appeals denied his request, even though he did, did volunteer to go to the original one that he put up. So that's the first one. The second was, I don't remember the name of the church, but it's over near West Middle School. And they've got a 32-acre parcel there and it's a heavily wooded area and it had a sign out there for a number of years, just a backlit sign that was near the inner, not near the intersection, but near the corner. And it got run over and demolished during the wintertime. So there's nothing there except the base now. And they wanted to put in a new low-density digital sign. Well, the neighbors weren't happy about that one either, about it causing them problems with light bleeding into their homes and they were trying to sleep and so on and so forth. And so ultimately that went down to a defeat as well. Although we did point out very clearly to the homeowners that yes, we denied that, but to understand clearly, they are within their rights to put another new sign on that base. There's a third one, by the way. Couple of others have been removed. But just, we just wanted to make sure they were aware of that, that we denied your request for the digital sign. That's it.
Any questions from Mr. Brown? Next would be site plan review and I don't think we've seen anything in the past month.
No.
Last thing, one of the last things we had seen was the, one of the plans that we saw tonight for the...
Concept plans.
Concept plans for the hotel. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If there are no other comments, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Bandersky to adjourn. Is there support for that motion or... What else? Mr. Johnson? Motion to adjourn by Mr. Bandersky, support by Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
They'll close. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Great. Good job, David.